August or on July thirty.
I think it's.
You started here for. No.
But they're just gonna, they're just delivering.
Yeah, you still. You still. If that would have been.
I don't know.
I'll tell you.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
There was no thing for y'all there outside any of us before. That's.
Like we were up here, I mean, I just did our hydro float test Wednesday. They have a paint that they were anything like this. So we can start working on the water model. They have a thin capacity.
They were bringing George's like. Very.
Yeah, I love.
I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I heard you. Sorry. What was that?
Yeah.
Two rates I just scared.
Yeah.
Right after, okay, right after you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I got that.
Oh, yeah, oh, you're good.
Yeah, so everybody who grabbed it, and then it's up.
Oh.
Yeah. And local with you.
Yeah.
Yeah. About my.
Oh.
You know.
You're on my own. First of all. I got all three of you.
You know, side access.
You guys.
Oh, my goodness.
I, 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 I mean, I like.
Yeah. It's upstairs. I'll go.
I know, but. Was it the horses in the. Right, George, right.
Yeah.
Where's the overtime?
He's like a very.
So my priority is. Yeah, that's.
No, it's almost everything is hot here.
Everything.
Yeah. This is. Joe's sir, right? Oh, that's amazing. The little water.
There, there.
I do.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Yep.
I do.
I just kept it tonight.
He hasn't been, he hasn't been.
Just want to borrow my gal. Here, okay, everyone. Uh, we're gonna start tonight's meeting. Like to welcome everyone to the November eighteen twenty twenty one meeting of the town of Dwyberg Planning Board. Uh, my name is Jeff Schmidt. I am the chair of the, uh, planning board. Uh, we're gonna go around with some quick introductions, so everybody remember what is on board.
Good evening, Elizabeth Noga, planning board member. She's a major planning board temple.
I don't like waffle playing whatever. Now, I'm a planning board member. Josh Allen, planning board member. Michael Santulli, planning board member.
Mike Harris, uh, vice chair of the planning board.
Melissa.
Or something.
Melissa, really, really silent, oh, she's the workforce for this whole effort that we're doing here. Uh, this, this, I'm not gonna grandstand her, but I, I think, uh, the town is very fortunate in having the board constituted such as it is. We have, we have a really good background of people, uh, three, three people on this board are licensed professional engineers. We have construction managers, people who work in regulatory agencies. So we, we have some of the best environmental council we can get in the area. So we have a, a, a good board. Uh, we have a code enforcement officer who's been with the town forever. So he knows the talent that's back in his hand. And, and Melissa is the, let's say, the workhorse to the board. She has, is, is constantly trying to get everything up to speed. We have hundreds of cementals that come into these meetings and they're, they're posted, they're stamped. And there's a lot of people which goes in around to try to get these meetings arranged, uh, in accordance with the public officers laws and things. So, so I just wanna give everybody thanks on the board. Uh, we're not really high paid, we're not paid at all, as a matter of fact. So what, it's a volunteer thing, and I, I do believe that the town is very fortunate to have this chemistry at the head there as well. With that being said, uh, the first part of our agenda is the open forum. Uh, general rules for the open forum is we'd ask you to, uh, discuss anything you want about the, the towns and the planning board's activities. Uh, limit your presentation to four minutes. Please identify yourself by name and your house location within the town. And with that, I'll make a motion to open the public forum for the November eighteen twenty one town planning board meeting.
I'll second that with one clarification that you don't discuss things that are on the agenda.
That's correct, that's correct, thank you. So.
Jeff.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes. Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Awful.
Yes.
And, yes.
Okay, so, someone will like to speak.
Thank you. Thanks. Uh, Patrick Rann, ninety eight sixty six, Western Turnpike. Uh, I'm here, I just wanna take a couple of minutes to, uh, talk about the resolution that was passed in June regarding the overflow parking area for the existing car wash on Route twenty. And I just have a couple of slides to show as well, but, um, you know, going back to the spring when we discussed this, a lot of information, a lot of discussion was had about this project. Um, we submitted some concerns to the board about, you know, a lot of the neighbors around the area were very concerned about what was gonna happen here. Um, I do believe that the board took those concerns to heart and they did take them into consideration. And I can see from the, uh, the, the conditions that were added to the resolution that you did take some of those things into consideration, your passing conditions. What I wanna do for you today real quickly, um, is, and just so that you know, my, uh, piece of property is the one right next to the car wash. So I've been directly tested by this parking area that was built directly behind my house. What I wanna do is just go through some of the conditions that were, uh, I'm just gonna read these right off the resolution. Number one, the planning and screening plan should be undertaken during the key part at the same time as the construction of the overflow parking lot. And that the landscaping plan and including trees be warned by the supplier of materials and any dead or non-thrive trees should be replaced. The construction began in July. And you'll see from the photographs, his concept of screening was done a couple of weeks ago. So none of the screening or the planning was done during any of this construction. Uh, there were literally hundreds of trucks that went back and forth behind the company store or whatever. The dust and the dirt that got picked up in my yards was, was unbelievable. Two, the professional engineer for the project shall submit a certification to the town that the overflow parking lot and the screening was constructed in accordance with the approved site plans. And that the stormwater drainage is functioning as designed. I don't believe you have received that letter yet.
No. Not that I'm aware of, no.
The existing car wash shall place a gate at the entrance to the overflow parking lot to ensure that trucks or other vehicles are not kept at the facility overnight, but only conjunction, only in conjunction with using the services of car wash. As of the seating, there are no gates in place. And as of Monday night, there was a truck that was parked overnight all night. Running in the backyard. Existing car wash shall place visible long lasting signs at the car wash and overflow parking lot for the design attached to the attorney's made fourteen letter indicating that trucks may not idle. And that trucks may not park at the facility overnight. As of tonight, there are no signs. Indicate anything about any restricting overnight parking. And like I said, there was a truck there this Monday night. Uh, skip over to number six, the existing car wash shall ensure that any music is turned off between the hours of nine P M. and nine A M. And that the dust is controlled by the access road, so that dust does not leave the property boundaries and go into the neighboring properties. This one's kind of interesting. Music did stop for a little while, but recently in the past two weeks, we're listening to talk radio. So I don't know whether he's just trying to be cute by saying he's not playing music, but now we're listening to talk radio till all hours of the night. Um, and as far as the dust control from the access road, that's never been. So if you wanna hit the, uh, next week, so what I brought along, I don't know how easy it is to be able to see this, but. This is, I'm standing on my deck looking out, and this is the, you know, these are a couple of trucks that are parked in that lot. As you can see, it's less than a hundred feet from my deck. This view is also, and you can see, these are the little, the trees that he planted. These little trees right here are the ones he planted, that's his idea of screening and landscaping the block right here to the apartment. And this view is also accessible from my dining table. I have a huge picture window off the back of my deck, so this is what I see when I sit at my dining table. Go to the next picture, please. This is just another shot from the center, again, looking off of my deck. As you can see, you can't see it very clearly because the light's gone, but now there's a dumpster back there, there's tractors, there's a couple of huge red containers, I have no idea what's in them. There's barrels of chemicals that are stored back there that apparently he uses as clean solution for the car wash, there's a trailer over here. Next picture. Again, just another shot, again, I'm just trying to show you, these are the trees that he put along the property line to block my view. Over the next one, please. Then this is just the other corner of the lot. Uh, one more. And this is just another shot, there's a trailer sitting here with no, no truck on it, it's just sitting there. And again, this is in my deck. What I wanted to point out is, uh, I have to get you going forward one more. I will hold right there, go back again. Uh, go back a couple of. In the, uh. Go back one more. Just wanted to point out, right there, in the middle, it's hard to see, but in the middle, like this, the whole parking lot was supposed to be surrounded by swales. So all the water that came down rerouted around and down through the center. I don't know why he did this, but he put a culvert in here in the middle. There's a culvert right there. And, and I think the reason he put it in there was that he could drive down there and plant the trees. Because that's the only way to get into my property is through that back lot. Now that culvert is now basically a ramp, so when it rains, the water now comes down off the parking lot, over the culvert and down into the property. I don't think that culvert was on the original plan. But there's a problem. You can go, just go forward. And, you know, just one other comment on that, and this, like I said, this is less than a hundred feet from my backyard, there's no lights out there. And as you can see, there's no real barrier, there's no fencing, there's no, there's nothing stopping the trucks from falling up there and just walking right into my backyard. And, and, and I, and I travel for my job, so I'm away a few nights, and now I gotta worry about my wife being all alone, and someone just can park back there undetected and walk right into my backyard. Uh, keep going. So again, and this is the back corner. This is the southeast corner, if you remember from the drawing, this, all this water is supposed to be going around all the way across the back of my property and then down between the two properties. And I know Dale's been out to the site to investigate this, and you can see right here in this corner, that basically they dug a trench. And now the water is coming down into my neighbors there here tonight, uh, just, and I, if you go forward, I got just a couple more quick pictures. This is, this is the back of their property, which is never wet. As you can see, it's basically a river, and this has happened after the last two rainstorms that we had. And, and there's another piece of property back there, which is a farm field, which is also the water, which is, one more. This is, you got just another angle, this is the water running out of that back corner, that parking area. One more. This is the front of the parking, this is the front of the car wash after the latest rainstorm we had, the front ditch. What's happening is that front pond is overflowing. The drain, the, uh, the discharge pond is overflowing and that ditch is now overflowing. D O T came by that day, had to put cones out in the road because there's so much water coming out of that pond. F Y I, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, last week, the town board sent a letter to the D E C requesting that that discharge pond be tested for P F O S. It's been taking discharged water for forty years and it's never been able to check for anything. I think there's just one more on there, Melissa, I'm sorry, I know I've gone over my phone, it's on. Keep going. I just wanted to show you, this is the angle from their back property looking into their yard. As you can see, that's not too far from the top, and there's, and this, the house and the barn are below that level. So a few more inches of water and then their house and their barn is gonna be flooded. So I know, you know, you guys put a lot of time into this, but either this drawing was wrong from day one, or the person who put the parking lot in didn't do it properly. But there's no way that that water should be running all over other people's property.
Just a quick, are the trees on your property or?
No, they're on his farm.
I thought you said they were on your property.
No, I'm sorry, but you got that question, no, I think there's one more. Yeah. And then just to show you, the whole point of this was to keep the water off of my property, but this is that culvert I was telling you about, and after the last rainstorm, you can see the tree line, the trees are where my property line is. But as you can see, the water is now running right over that culvert, down through the trees, and this is how what my backyard looked like after the last rainstorm. The goal is to keep the water out, but just it's not good enough. You know, I, I'll say one more thing and then I'm gonna stop. You know, my wife and I have been living here for thirty years, we've been great neighbors to that car wash, never complained once about it. We bought the house, we knew the car wash was there, we knew there was gonna be traffic going in and out, never complained once in thirty years. And I always respected the fact that that's a business, he's got a right to run his business, never complained. The new owner has just decided that he's gonna do whatever he wants back there. And to me, you know, this idea of the, you know, having these trees in here and not putting this parking lot in properly is just a total act of respect for you and for me. And I just, I don't know what the recourse is. Um, I don't know what we do next here, but I hope that we can come to some kind of resolution, I don't anticipate him doing anything about.
Right, so, so. To make sense, the plan was not followed, and clearly it's, the plan was not followed, in my opinion. Then, uh, the, the enforcement would be undertaken by the building inspectors. And their, and their job is to make sure that if somebody gets an approval, that they comply with the approval. And also that we have a certification from the P V. And the P V is not gonna certify that, because it doesn't look anything like what was supposed to be built. And the other, the other issue from my perspective is the height of the trees.
Yeah.
I, I don't understand why you would do that.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you why he did it, because if you look closely at the architectural drawing that was provided, it shows fourteen trees on that drawing. And that's what he put in, he put in fourteen trees.
Yeah.
It says four foot high.
They're, they're, they're less. I was at question, they're less.
But I got, I got, and guys, listen, the, and I'll just read one other thing here, and this is from the zoning ordinance thirteen point two point four. Sufficient screening shall be provided to obscure the parking space from the residential property. Those trees are not obscuring anything. And, and trees are not gonna do it, I'm not gonna wait fifteen years for those trees to grow, so then we finally lock the view. I think there's gotta be some type of screening put in place, uh, and just because it's so close. Uh, I, I just think that this falls far short of what, what the zoning ordinance calls for, and I, and, and his defense is gonna be, I did what the plans told me to do.
If, when you get a building that can't occupy until you're. See, this is a site project, is it similar?
Typically, it's certain for the use.
Or certificate of condition sometimes they call it, yeah.
But he's using it before that's provided.
Shouldn't it be?
And, and it was for parking, not storage, uh.
Yeah.
Cereal, but I drove through there too, and there's a lot of other stuff up at that, that, that upper side.
I, I, I invite anyone here to stop by my place and stand on my deck.
And he, he's in the, I looked at the swell, the swell appears to be filled in with stone, even it doesn't appear to be a swell as detailed.
But those are all like the.
And, and just, and just from a visual thing, like I said, I've lived there for thirty years, from the east side to the west side, as you go from the corner back up to the car wash, it's uphill.
Right.
So for any engineer to say, oh, we're gonna turn all that water around and try to send it back to the car wash driveway down. I have to question what they were looking at, I never saw anybody take any measurements or anybody look at that. So that drawing, I think, is flawed, but that's just my take on it, you can't push water uphill, so, thank you, I appreciate the time.
Okay, so anybody else like to make any comment during the open forum?
I'm Heidi Kreiser, I live next to Patrick, ninety eight forty eight Western Turnpike. And the concern is, is really our property getting flooded now. There, we had no water in there before, and now it's four foot deep. Um, and you can literally see it now, how he has it literally coming into our back property and going around.
Even where the ditch he, uh, cut in, it's not even on his land, he went on.
Yeah, that's the other thing, I think he's gone off his property line to finish that.
Cause his three properties are ours, Patrick's, and.
And then there's another farm field back there, and I think he's gone past the line on that. One other quick thing, there's nothing in the plan about what he's supposed to do with snow. That's my next word, what's he gonna do with our?
And that's what we're really concerned about, is when that snow melt comes, I mean, we're already at five foot. What is that going, I mean, we live. That property, nineteen eighty three, we've owned that property, we've never had an issue until now. So we're really concerned about that.
We went to great lengths with his engineer that designed that drainage system, and it's not, it's built not in accordance with the.
Absolutely, and that's where my concern, and he absolutely did not follow anything that was supposed to happen.
And what Matthew said, you know, a swell is a swell, you know, you build up dirt, so, I mean, that ain't, parking lot is a foot and a half where all the water, and it runs like a river now.
Saw that there.
Yeah. You know. Exactly, exactly.
And again, we understand there's always water there, but there's always brush, trees, you know, that slowed everything down in natural way, now it's.
Eighteen straight shots.
Straight shot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment during this open forum?
Is there anybody on this?
Anybody on, on our Zoom?
Hi, it's Lynn, one three three eight eight, Twinsburg Road. On October nineteenth, twenty twenty one, the governor signed Assembly Bill A one two eight eight A. Which requires that certain documents, including proposed resolution, law, rule, regulation, policy, or any amendment that is scheduled to be subject of a discussion by a public body during an open meeting to be made available at least twenty four hours prior to the meeting. And documents should be posted on the town website.
Yeah. It's obvious we'll be.
Hear me, Melissa?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
So what, what, what we'll do and what I suggested, because the issue is, is primarily one, not only, but very immediately one of stormwater. That Matt, if you could, Matt, you and Jeff need the.
Can you hear me now?
Overall deficiencies, I think that's the, the best approach, is everybody else here comfortable with that approach?
Yeah, because they have to.
That's me.
Well, if you don't sign, they have to control. So is how are we gonna address the screening issue? Obviously, very.
Now.
Well, one thing, one thing I wanted to ask, ask the judge in particular, given that the trees are, are clearly not gonna do.
Can you hear me now?
Would it be your preference to have some kind of board on board fence back there?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I, I just wanna understand that.
Thank you.
I don't wanna make.
Can you hear me now?
The point well made, because we did kinda consider that the screening could be done vegetatively, but.
It's not.
It's not gonna work, and it's, you know, say, we'd all be long gone by.
Can you hear me now?
And a different big swell, like they do like front of a, uh, a, a store, you know, you get five foot, then trees on.
Can you hear me now?
But it's also become a security issue for sure.
That's right.
This is.
There's supposed to be no, no vehicle there overnight, so.
Can you hear me now?
You made that very clear, we made that very clear.
Monday night. Can you hear me now?
Sitting there waiting to get washed out at seven thirty is one. They sit there all night. It's just because they have to get off the road every hour, so they're using as a truck stop.
But, and, and that's not right, because they can go up to twenty and they can stay in the, in the place that you have this free. They don't have to stay.
And listen, you know, we're, we got a shortage of truck drivers this time, I don't wanna start calling the vehicles and having these truck drivers ticket, I don't wanna do that. But, you know, I'd rather this better resolve this, just make him do this.
Right, but if, if you, if you see anybody there without looking on, you should, you know, pretty much share it with the rest, you know, that's, that's what it's there for, you know.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing, just start documenting the, the incidents, but like I said.
Can you hear me now?
Cause everybody can hear when it's up, just.
If, if we're, if we're starting construction, we need to block it also.
Can you hear me now?
That's over behind the bay, is what they do, which they're not supposed to be there. And it's a twenty four hour car wash, so.
All right, can you hear me now? Where's Jackie?
Jackie?
Yeah. You're my new best friend. What did we do to do that speaker?
So we clicked on here, and we put. Okay, so that should, we should hear her now.
Can you hear me now?
Lynn, can you talk?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Can you turn, I'm talking. Oh, that's the microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, there we go.
You're the best. You're hired. I apologize, thank you.
You're welcome. Right.
You're good?
Okay.
Are you ready?
We're on the open forum, uh, Ms. Brony?
Okay, I, I apologize for that technical problem. Um, on October nineteenth, twenty twenty one, the governor signed Assembly Bill A one two eight eight A, which requires that certain documents, including proposed resolutions, law, rules, regulations, policy, or any amendment that is scheduled to be subject of discussion by a public body during open meeting, be made available at least twenty four hours prior to the meeting. Documents should be posted on the town website, I've attached the U R L for the full bill, full bill text, and I've also submitted a copy, it's just, this legislation is just one page long, it's great. Um, the board should be transparent and accountable to the taxpayers, the more eyes on a project, the better the project may be for the town for years to come. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment during this open forum? There's nothing, I make a motion to close the open forum for the November eighteen twenty one town of Dwyberg Planning Board.
Yeah.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing, uh, for Jules O'Boare seeks a special use permit for motor vehicle sales. Jules here, his representative. Okay, uh, make a motion, open the public hearing. Yes.
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 The board would you like to? Say anything about this project for the.
I think that I, you know, presented to the board pretty good.
Okay.
Not even a question.
Okay.
Yeah, um, um. Yeah, if you could, yeah. I definitely hope for that. If you could come forward and just describe the project.
Citizen speaker.
Ask, is there anybody here tonight to comment on Mr. on Jules O'Boare's project? For anybody here? Okay, so, uh, if you could describe it, that'd be helpful.
Seeking to obtain a, a permit, sort of the town law, special use permit, to implement the sale of, of two, uh, two motor vehicles, uh, on his parcel on Route seven.
And, uh, he's gonna have the appropriate license for selling?
Yeah, he needs this approval in order to obtain a state dealer's license, uh, this is a pretty explicit, you're paying that. And then they send out an inspector who actually looks at the site to make sure it provides. Yeah, they require them.
And here's the opposing to, uh, put, you wanna point out where.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know it was up there, yeah. So there's, it's all, it's fenced on the highway and on one side completely. So, uh, he's gonna have the vehicle back here, um, at the time. He does it all online, uh, doesn't advertise other than, I guess, uh, through any social media. And, uh, we had in the past been making repairs, no longer than make any repairs on the site. Those were the conditions, I think, that we had agreed to. Um, and he had had other vehicles on the site as well, as I understand, and if I understand now, it's not on the site. And he's actually been, I think, doing that for basically about forty. Uh, and he wants to make it a legal use. So, yeah, right there. I'm sorry, it's actually, I'm, that's the page, very, my eyes are pretty maxed. Over there. Like a spittle. Okay, um, so the public hearing is open, I, people have said it's Kristen. Come on. Feel free to. Feel free to.
Guess my first question, love the law, um, six, twenty seven. The amount of acreage that he has, and, uh, I guess, answer my question. He's applying direct to.
He's limited by that four point seven five six acres.
Sure, so I ask one question. So if he's offering more vehicles for sale, what's the recourse?
If he he violates the term of the special use permit, he should lodge complaint with Dale or Don.
Yeah, I came aware of this in, I think, early twenty eighteen when somebody stopped at my property and asked where the car dealership was. Uh, wasn't aware of that. I think it just sold at tax auction at the time, so. Drove by and there were a few dozen vehicles that had kind of appeared overnight. And he put the big fence up, but there are a couple of commission Walmart trailers, um, still parking on the property. Some of the board members have driven by this site. And the house itself, I think it's, as far as I know, it's uninhabitable. It's in a pretty serious state of disrepair. Certainly one of the sympathetic conditions, you know, it's quite an eyesore. He's owned it for quite a while and. Uh, a lot of vehicles that I do see come and go.
What you're talking about is that? How was that line?
No, I'm talking about his. Well aware of my next door neighbor, who lost right up, a big salvage yard. He's on the other side. Yeah, so he has two of his own, uh, the pink and the red one. I would take that into account, no truth. I don't think there's a habitable building on that property.
Do you know if he resides there?
I think he stays there on weekends. I know he's talked to Dale. I know that he kind of perfectly talked about that, I think. He had gotten building permits to do work, and I know he worked on the bathroom in the house, and I know it still doesn't. Because I was up there, it doesn't look very good right now, but his intent is to eventually repair it, as he's able financially to do that.
I don't remember when the, you know, the family was there. It was somewhere, somewhere condition, but, you know, there wasn't. You know, several dozen vehicles there.
And I don't.
There wasn't increased traffic. I I've got at least three people stop by and ask where the car dealer was.
Maybe he should get a sign.
Preferably do a sign.
Prefer they stop.
Oh, we can check on this, and unless you can tell us, of course.
Uh, he tells me that there's no, they removed the other vehicles that were there. Um, there were at one time quite a few vehicles there, so they moved them. I don't think you can actually see those from the road. Is that correct? There's fences all across there, right? So. There's not fences there anymore? Now he's, yeah, okay, now he's, I'm sorry. I misunderstood him. Basically, so he's put that up, I think, in an attempt to. Okay.
So I I guess my question was different. So I believe he's had a building permit to fix up the house.
To do some repairs on the house? I don't know the full, Dale, Dale was here, he could tell us, but. I think one, like Dale said, yeah, I've been talking to him and I've had dealings with him that has, you know, with respect to permits. Um, he told me that he had gotten a permit, I believe, for repairing the bathroom, and I said, will you have any outstanding issues with Dale right now? He said, no. Um, so that's the situation as I understand it at the moment.
From what my comment was.
I'm not, I'm sorry. Oh, I was just gonna add that I'm not sure that the condition of the house really applies to the permit someone. I mean, I don't think you can punish someone because they haven't repaired their house the way they probably would like it to look.
Well, at least there's like a great view. As part of the special use permit, because the criteria of the special, special use permit, regular standards, but what we'll do is we'll we'll find out what the status is of the building permits on the house. Are they open? Is there still active renovation going?
If this is, uh, automotive sales and that's for the public, that's the act of public.
No, we can put a condition that the condition is online.
Okay. Okay. So what is the pressure? Dale?
Yeah, only condition we can, yeah.
Yeah, he's required, I think we talked about this a little bit the last time, he's required to have a certain number of spaces by New York State law. And you would say, well, that doesn't mean that they have to sell. It just says, I have to pull it out.
Right, yeah, I remember that now.
Yeah, it was a small number, but. It has, he has to have space for at least three vehicles. So you could limit it in that regard, you know, space for no more than three vehicles. But otherwise, it's gonna catch twenty-two, you know.
You say you want twelve vehicles there.
Twelve vehicles.
Two are for sale.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, yeah. I don't think that's unreasonable, because that would.
Have so many unregistered vehicles.
Yeah. There's already a town ordinance with respect to that.
Yes.
In my experience, if they're more than three.
How many do you have?
I go up the big barn. Unless you contract it, I don't know, so.
I don't think the objection was that they're inside.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
But, you know, if you have, like, at one point, we had four cars, a truck and a horse trailer, and they were all like. And, uh, so, you know, it's not unusual if one has kids and one has hobbies, to have lots of stuff in your yard, so, but it's very explicit that if it's not, if it's not infected and it's not registered and it's not roadworthy, then it's very specific on the numbers that you can have. And it doesn't hurt us to put in a condition that says, I know, by the way, you know. Yeah.
I think too, Teresa, to address what you had a point to that. You know, by coming here and going through this process and getting conditions when the patient's on there, he's attempting to comport with what the law requires, as opposed, as you pointed out, the neighbor, which is a completely unlicensed, unpermitted, illegal salvage yard. And that's been there for a long period of time, to my research. So. I listen, so what I'm saying is, by by people coming here and applying for permits, the town can. Yeah.
The recent, the recent courses, the fancies, or anything else?
I'm like, long and short. At least what's been going on. Really compatible with agricultural, residential. I think the rest of Walmart trailers, things don't, don't help.
Where do you live? Just, I'm just curious. So I am to the east. To the east, so from like, what's the bar, Katie's or whatever that is?
Yes, there's J B Pub under East on the same side of the road.
So kind of more or less across from the birth.
So my property orders first.
Okay.
That was the old farmhouse.
Okay, yeah, you're.
You have powers as well?
Yes, I do. My concern was that the used car lot contracts from the residential character of the neighborhood.
Could you identify yourself?
Marcy P. Solero, Montrey, nine one zero, Queens for growth, one one four down, from this proposed line. And did you say that it's a requirement that he sells online?
Yeah.
Because that was my concern, that if he gets a special use permit, he can do anything within local law settings.
Uh, no, we can put conditions on the special use permit, and remember, because of the number of acres, he can only have two cars for sale at any time.
Okay, all right, thank you. That answers some of my questions. Um, another reason I am concerned and asking for is my own disapplication is the toxins that are associated with the used car from heavy health and old tires, motor oil spills, interior treated fabric, playing with patterns. My property is down hill. I am the next four down, so I grow almost all my own fruit organically. And three generations of my family live on this property. Their children, it's not just two years old, and there's evidence that these toxins can lodge in their bodies, stay there until adulthood, cause any number of health problems for both children and adults. So my concern is for the toxin to fall down. Also, the, I guess, this wire has admitted that the business is already operating. So these toxins have been coming onto my property already, without my knowledge, and without the approval of the town. What I'm asking is for this business to stop operating. It does have a Facebook business page. It is advertising, and that the existing cars for sale be removed. It's not suited to this area because young children are living there. Food is grown for human consumption, and the character of the neighborhood is residential. Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment?
Can I comment from Zoom?
Public hearing is open. Anyone has to write a comment, please identify yourself by name and address.
Thank you. Lynn Bruning, one three three eight eight, Dwayne'sburg Road. I request that the board gather more information before any action is taken. Local law six of twenty seventeen is found on the town website. And it permits sales of vehicles limited up to six, and the parcel must contain two acres per vehicle. And the applicant's parcel is only four point seven acres, so I'm assuming they can only sell two vehicles at a time or fewer. And I apologize if I'm repeating something that's very difficult to hear, um, what people are saying on Zoom. Uh, the supporting documents for the special use permit are found on the November eighteenth, twenty twenty one, Planning Board Meeting Minutes, page fifty-eight through sixty-five. It includes the public hearing notification, the short environmental assessment form, and a letter from Mr. Dwyer, the applicant's attorney. This information does not include proof of a New York State vehicle dealer's license. Has the applicant provided the board a valid New York State license for selling vehicles? The short environmental form, part one, dated August sixth, twenty twenty one, states the project parcel's acreage of four point seven six, and it reflects two point zero acres that will be physically disturbed. Um, so I'm assuming that two acres is where they're parking the vehicles. And I request clarification on item number fifteen. Um, the site may host the northern long-eared bat, which is a threatened species. If the bat is on the site, then I request that number fifteen on the EAF be updated. And item number twenty, the adjoining properties to the east are two parcels that are used as a junkyard, and it's unknown if these parcels have a permit. Is it possible that the numerous vehicles and other junk located on that site may contain hazardous waste? And should this information be included in item number twenty in the EAF to protect the town from any future liability? Local law number six of twenty seventeen does not appear to be incorporated in the Town of Dwayne'sburg zoning ordinance twenty fifteen, and I request clarification on the application's, application's compliance with the following zoning ordinances. Um, is it in conflict with zoning ordinance three point five point one oh one, motor vehicle sales, which states that any place where three or more used motor vehicles in operating condition are offered for sale? And is local law two of nineteen eighty-one for junked and abandoned vehicles, the most recent law pertaining to junked and abandoned vehicles? Has the board reviewed this law in relation to the applicant's request for a special use permit? Schenectady County SIM images shows that more than a dozen vehicles are parked behind that fence. Um, and do the following zoning ordinance ordinances have anything to bear on the application? Um, it would be three point five point one one four for parking spaces, three point five point one two six, the salvage yard, and zoning ordinance three point five point eight seven, the junkyard. I don't know if these are pertinent to the application under review or not, but they all do pertain to, uh, motor vehicle sales and 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 repair work. I request that the board clarify how many vehicles are permitted to be stored on the lot? How many vehicles that don't run are permitted, and how many unlicensed vehicles are permitted? And can the applicant say have twenty-five vehicles on the lot, but only, quote, selling two at a time on the internet? Um, and is this parcel over an aquifer? And what is being done to protect the soils and groundwaters from hazardous materials, fuel spills, and other environmental concerns? And does the special perm, special use permit run with the land? If the applicant sells, will the next owner be permitted to also operate and use a used car sales lot? So I request that these are clarified before any board action is taken. And if I may, my mom sent a letter in, um, but she's on a computer that does not have a microphone. May I please read her letter into the record? I guess, okay. Um, this is from Susan Biggs, also at one three three eight eight, Dwayne'sburg Road. How many unregistered vehicles are permitted on any property in the town of Dwayne'sburg? What is to prevent the applicant from placing two vehicles online but selling any of the numerous vehicles that may be stored on the parcel? The attached Google satellite image shows twenty-two vehicles on the parcel. The fence may obstruct the public view from Dwayne'sburg Road, but it does not prevent negative impacts such as diminished property values resulting from living next to a used car sales lot. Real estate agents, as well as potential homeowners, frequently assess properties with Google satellite images. This bird's eye view allows everyone to see a potential neighbor's backyard before investing in a future home. I ask the board to please uphold zoning ordinance fourteen six two C. The character of the neighborhood and values of surrounding property is reasonably safeguarded. Please preserve the neighborhood's residential agricultural zoning and protect the citizens of Dwayne'sburg's property rights and property values. I request that the applicant special use permit be denied. And that's from Susan Biggs. Thank you.
Very good. Just one more time, uh, just tell us how many vehicles is is we are gonna be dealt with there. I, I know it's two, but I would like you to tell us that, we're in twenty-two, forty, this, you know.
I don't think he's intending to have more than the two of these seven on the parcel. He's gotta have space for three, according to the, the EMV, but I, on my understanding from the board, from the first meeting of two, was that it was like, this is not gonna be permitted. So I said to him, you gotta get rid of all of these vehicles. And.
It was clear here in his mind that if the permit is issued, it will be specifically for two vehicles. That's it.
To be sold, you know, and I, you know, I think he's bound by whatever the board decides to do with respect to. And also, as we talked about, the number of, if it's an unregistered vehicle, how many you can have on the lot, and I don't remember what the number is, it's not very high. One or two, isn't it? Something like that. So, 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 I mean, you know, that's, and I think you're gonna, my understanding was that was gonna be very specific in in the permit, with the permit's grant. There's gonna be, you know, certain conditions laid out, and that was gonna be one of the primary conditions.
Thanks. Any other comments? For this public hearing? For this public hearing? There's nothing today, I will, I will look to close the public hearing. There's Jules Ogorn, special use permit for motor vehicle sales.
A second?
Yes.
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 Yes. Um, Jerry, one thing I noticed, uh, the EAF still says two acres of disturbance, we had talked about that.
Yeah, I thought we kind of orally amended that now, I'm sorry, I could actually,
It, it's still marked as two acres on the EAF, so.
I mean, I can spin another written one that,
I, I think that's where people are getting some,
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did it say more than two?
No, it said, it says two on the EAF.
Yeah, I think we determined that was the fact of what you were asking.
Correct, but has it still on the record that we can, or two acres?
Yeah, okay, I mean, I could amend that. Want, if you want that in writing.
Zero, zero, yeah. There is no site, and it's like, where?
Okay. Moving on to old business. Uh,
We need to cover business.
I think we're gonna, uh, look at the conditions that we want to impose, because I heard a lot of them popping around here. So if the board's okay, I'll prepare residential conditions, and then we'll get it as the next. And that'll give Jerry time to change your mind.
So I could comment on that?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'm just sort of on the same page, something. And I'll get an amended, yeah, yeah, that, change in that.
Yeah. I think we wish to able the, uh, Jules over, uh, special use permit, special use permit, uh, till December, what is it?
Sixteen.
December sixteen? December sixteen, yep. Yes.
Lynn. Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay, we're, we're gonna make a motion now, it's associated to, to take Mr. Stern, United. Um, and he's in the back, I believe, hi Mr. Stern. Um, uh, for just medical reasons, so we can be that, for those who, that's our problem. So why don't you, I mean, the people, yes, you can.
That's the right person.
Okay. And, uh, how does he, we don't have to, and how does he, Okay. That's the last idea.
I'm sorry, I'm saying one, really. Is there a, a flag for special use permit? Or any intent, and? Yes, sir. So, if you, strike that to the board and?
Okay, so, uh, you guys got a plan? So, yeah. Um, one of my rental properties, which is seven acres, I have two houses on there. I, it was the first property I came from Marinerville back in nineteen eighty-eight, it was a big barn, it was a great party, and it was a great facility for the community to use. Uh, substantially, I was a renter there, was a renter of the barn in North Town. Uh, you didn't go longer at a barn to get together, uh, have parties. I picked it up with my wife a few years later, uh, and we have been using it since then to continue to use it in seven acres for social gatherings for the community, and we'll get together and so on. So, last year, a lot of it was sitting home messed up. My daughter, myself, a bunch of my neighbors took down a hundred fifty-year-old barn, down Route one fifty-nine, moved it to the property, re-erected it. At the same time, started talking with the town about the possibility of using it as a venue site. So, there's been a hundred fifty-year-old barn reconstructed on the property. It's been reconstructed to commercial though. It's received a building inspection, electrical inspection. Uh, but that's gonna file a schedule to make sure everything's fit to go. The fire department's been over there, as our chief's inspected it, he's inspected the two means of access to the property. Uh, he's done a site plan of what happens if they have to come to the property, and that's all it's done, so. I've been using it this summer, we had six events, I believe, non-commercial. We had, uh, let's kind of get together, book house, uh, my rent, Pennsyl, from River Lake, and used it. And what we'd like to do is now move forward and look at the possibility of actually being able to use it a little bit commercially, so I can continue to use the property and give the community and other people a, a venue, basically a wedding barn. Uh, we've had events on a site of over two hundred people. We use this site to host the, uh, triathlon. Uh, there's been numerous events that over two hundred people. We use the lawn area for parking, never had an issue with that, off-site parking. Our, the barn is just under fifteen hundred square foot, so it's a maximum capacity would be ninety-nine persons. Your special use permit allows up to two hundred, I don't wanna get that big, it's ahead of, I'd like the permit to say a hundred and fifty, so I don't have to come back to you in a couple of years, and things are going good. I wanna start with some ninety-nine weddings and stuff like that, they'll dip into something a little bit over that, see what property can handle. Uh, where the barn is on the property there, the neighbor behind the barn was very grateful, he helped me erect it. Um, the back of the picture, so the right of the picture would be the bed and breakfast property on River Lake. They, Rick there helped me erect the barn. Um, he's utilized his property for his bed and breakfast, when they had had weddings before, was on use it over there. And if you're looking back towards me, with that Mary, my neighbor up there, she was really bored last year, she came over staying, went up on scaffolding, she did a fantastic job, didn't charge me back. She's offered up her driveway to be used as the emergency access for the fire department. Uh, that flows right into the site, and the fire department chief said he had no issues with that. I've talked a lot, but I didn't cover everything I'm supposed to cover. What do you got, Chris?
Okay, what I got is, this is the first one, and we will use that law, okay? So what, what we, what we need, and I respect that he's told us all this, what we need is your plan and writing, and on paper, so, in accordance with the, you know, in accordance with the event law, which you,
You've got that right, right?
What?
You've got that right. Step by step, sorry.
Oh, you've got it, yes, I just, yeah.
Step by step, going through your event law, addressing each paragraph section. It's not pretty, but it addresses everything in your event law as far as how I'm gonna handle the bathroom facilities, uh, what we're ready for parking, uh, everything in the event law. It's not pretty, I wanna fill you guys out to what else you need on that.
Is there a longer limit?
I think your event law allows for ten o'clock. I don't like to get amplified music past nine o'clock, so I'm cutting off amplified music at nine o'clock, shutting any commercial event down at ten o'clock. Uh, basically, might wanna call it a wedding barn, it's a four-hour venue site. Uh, it's mostly gonna be on Saturdays, is what I anticipate. Probably the first year I'm working, I get four or five, I said, events. I don't ever wanna go over twenty events a year, that'd be a good cap to put on, I don't wanna have to come back to you guys. You know, if I can say ten, we'll get eleven or twelve. Uh, property owner behind me has requested that we put up signs identifying the property line. He doesn't want people strolling over his property, understandable. We, there is a tree line that is thirty foot tall, not four foot tall, that I planted many years ago on that line. In front of the barn here, that picture doesn't show, I have, there's a gravel area set up for, uh, wedding tents. So the barn itself is the fifteen hundred square foot, there's another area for somebody to erect a tent in that area. And there's a fire pit in the foreground with a picture of that. Um, the, the fire chief's already inspected it outside, it's up to George.
I think this question I would have, is I know, I know you say you're a part of the grass, they use neighbors' driveways and all this other stuff, well, all sounds great, but we've got nothing showing us that it works.
Okay, so, the only use of the neighbor driveway is for the fire department to access. Fire chief's got it inspected, and I'll have it in writing that the neighbor has given permission for that to be used for the access. The law requires two accesses, one acceptable for the fire department.
Yeah, so, again, I, I think you would, I don't know, I have to have something legally, because your neighbor can sell that property, and then they don't want you to, but what I'm saying is,
Special use permit.
They can sell it, and you don't wanna, we're not gonna allow it anymore, so.
But don't maintain a second access, I do not get a, my special use permit. And once again, if, Chris, you're familiar with my tone of voice, I get off key. Don't, you know, my voice sounds like I'm upset, I'm low, okay? She's used to it right now.
You know, Matt is used to the key. So, um, no, I think, I think since we just got this, what, what I wanna do is give the planning board members a chance to review the information, and then come up with a series of questions, okay? And then if you could come to the meeting in September, all right? Then we can go over what questions the board has, what additional information they would need, okay?
Okay.
I think one though, that I, I noticed, and it's probably in your favor in the long run, but the traffic study for Indian lookout is probably a scale that is not comparable to your, your event.
I need a way with a quick announcement, I think.
I, I understand, but, you know, that, I mean, that's for, you know, they add up to like twenty thousand people there, and nobody, I don't think you really wanna compare your event to their event, um, it might,
Talk to people about traffic studies, and you just say traffic study in here. Now, if this is only gonna be a seasonal activity, are you gonna want me to wait till June to do a traffic study on Saturday, or?
No, I mean, they can do traffic, they can do traffic studies for the scale venue you're proposing.
Mm-hmm.
It's not like they have to do road count, they put the thing down, road, this is all done like, and, you know, they have how many turns they expect to go left out of a, a venue with a hundred cars, and we go right. It can be done, you know, desktop, computer-wise, um, it's not anything that'd wait till spring to do.
Just proportional in size, that venue, um, we're shooting for the ninety-nine, we're like a one fifty at ninety-nine.
So that's what they would tailor the study for, that max peak arrival time, say you're, you're coming,
Talking forty cars, so you average three people per car for a wedding venue, so.
So that's what they'll do, they'll put it in a thing where, I mean, if you, if you're familiar with Indian lookout one, the, I forgot, it's pregnant Manning, or one of those did it, um, and that's what they did, they, they went in all the intersections. This is gonna be much smaller scale, but I think, you know, there's,
You're gonna hold, once you're ready for me to get a traffic study, recommend, and then someone else will take care of that, okay?
Yeah, I think, I think it'll be in your best interest, because if the neighbors are, see, uh, proposed, you know, to use the Indian lookout traffic study, that's gonna throw up flags just by the name, especially around the lake, and you live over there, you know how that, that traffic pattern, he rail, and, and we've had a study, um,
Actually, that's three years.
Yeah, but if, if you've been there since the eighties, I guess, and you know how that, that happened, and that was with their study. So, I think this would be in your best, it's gonna be much fewer cars.
That's my issue with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I was saying that they did, we just wanted to,
I, I just wanted to make sure that,
The first thing they're gonna say, I used to do traffic studies, or I'd sit out there and be like, where are cars going, and stuff like that. So I'm familiar with traffic, so the first thing I, China, they look, you know?
Well, there's the current, there's ones that, you know, we count current volume, but then this is for what they increase. So, it's on us, developers putting in a new big box store, they're, you have to project how many turns in and out of that place, and at peak load times.
Okay.
So for you guys, it's gonna be very simple, you're, it's a Saturday day at two o'clock is your peak load for a wedding, or something like that. It's gonna be very low, but,
Right, we're not putting a permit just for Saturday, every day, the anticipation's just Saturday.
Yeah, but, I mean, you're gonna have a, an estimate for a wedding, the general timeframe on a day. The peak load is gonna be nine o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday, and they'll, they'll just estimate it.
Okay.
And the other thing they'll do too is ask Matt's question, which is, where are the people gonna park, is there enough space? Or are you gonna use an off-site parking space and bring people in, which is fine too?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so, you show pictures of fifty cars, and it's been used for years, the grass park up there, rock solid. That's where the bed wreck is parked, all the cars are,
Yeah, I think I've seen a couple lines, if ten was in there.
Yeah, so you know, we're not gonna use the front for the playing venue, because it's, I don't think, right, the type, and it's down in the back.
I think that'll all of this become some kind of site plan, to identify what parking is, but.
It's, Let me give you, we're gonna talk, and you're gonna wanna change, I've got one copy to scale, that we can leave with you.
Okay, great.
Uh, where the park is gonna be, where the, so the barn is, I don't know.
Uh, they're gonna be required to have accessible parking, or park, that first, partial, open, or I don't know that that's,
Do we, you know, space to the, to that place of barn, you know?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if you have a, if you're parking on grass, I didn't know if there's, if there's a dedicated number of, something.
It was an Indian, I think I, I wanted to create a,
A firm and stable surface, and to get into the bathroom facility or something like that. So I don't know, I mean, this is a question.
That's really a question for Dale.
Okay.
And he's, he's not here tonight, and hopefully he'll be here, so that we can ask, you know, what, like, we need to have two eight parking spaces, or two,
Stable surface, yeah.
Faces.
First, um, you know, mobility impaired, you know, parking.
And right now, there's ten big spaces on the ground.
Okay, so then, yeah, you're probably already there.
The bathroom facilities are not providing employees, ladies, they provide the building. They gotta show a word, a certain number of court bodies per person.
Okay.
Places, some place for permanent process.
Well, I mean, you know, there's certainly nothing wrong with keeping my approach, you know, it's fine saying I'm taking on the property, you know? Your neighbors might complain about, oh, you're fortified.
Where we got some, we got some fortified.
I appreciate your time tonight.
All right, thank you.
So, we'll, we'll stop back next December, and you might, fair or loose, permit that I can work on, maybe put you in January, is what we're thinking.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, it's, this time of year, I assume you're not doing a lot of, you know, making video.
Nope, not doing anything, I gotta start first.
And this is just one minor comment I have, interestingly, um, just because it's adjacent to, it's like, I don't know, it's being addressed to a property that's eligible for the National Register, we're gonna do full environmental assessment forms this year, so we have the short environmental assessment form here.
The full environmental assessment. Over, you got that?
It's, I've done the D E C website. And you can pull it right up. Because it's adjacent to a, and it doesn't give you a lot of detail, but apparently it's adjacent to a property that's eligible for the National Register.
Okay.
So what that means is that it's a, a super type one project, which requires a more thorough review, which is just a full environmental assessment form, so it's thirteen pages, extended, great.
Just, yeah. Yes? Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna transition back to old business. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to change, able to, Joseph Stern, special use permit.
For the,
Yes, yes, yes. Yes. Yeah, it was great.
Thank you, uh, old business, Richard Carney, he's available, um. Just permit, um. Somebody from. Bill, would you like to give us an update on what's transpired since our last meeting? Yeah.
Um, sorry, you're fine?
Um, they, Mike, how are you?
Yeah. So since the last meeting, we worked with E S R G and Prime A E on the two, because party reviews. I believe Prime A E submitted a letter this morning. Now let them speak today, but more or less saying all their requests have been met and we can close down. E S R G submitted a report earlier this week, saying that we are largely compliant, submit the documents they referred to last meeting. And from our perspective and talking to E S R G, they felt that we were closed down that front as well. We also submitted a letter, answered some of the questions raised by the planning board last meeting. And submitted supplemental responses to some of the community, um, questions you received during the public comment period. So those were our three deliverables since the last meeting, the supplemental community response. E S R G responses that led to the new report and the Prime A E documents that led to.
And Bill, all those documents are in the drop box, correct?
Correct, every, everything that is not confidential, some of the battery information was confidential, but everything, everything else is in the, is in the drop box.
I just wanted to.
Sorry, I should do one clarification, I said this in our written response. You have not uploaded the E S R G report because the E S R G report stated it should not be shared publicly until it's finalized. That was, that's written on the second page of the report, so we have not shared that yet.
Yeah, you can put, you can put that in.
Okay.
Yes, it would be subject to foil anyhow, so.
I just wanted to make one comment on, remember, we were, we received numerous, numerous, uh. Comments. From an individual and I, I would like, you know, we've had this, this project on the books for a long time, we had a public hearing, took public comments. And we continue to receive comments, but I'd like to, uh, reset that, just explain what our position is on constantly getting bombarded with more and more comments. Now that the process is maturing.
Okay, so, um, originally after the close of the public hearing, there was a statement that the, uh, that written comments could be submitted for a period of time. Afterwards, and, um, and then we kind of allowed that comment period to continue on. So I guess the question tonight, the board is, are you satisfied that you have everything in front of you that you need? Um, you know, in terms of public comment or responses from the applicant to make a, to make a decision? Are, are, are you comfortable that you have enough information in the record? Making decisions?
I think we've afforded, um, ample opportunity for the public, both written and comment, um, and. I feel comfortable that everyone who thought to make comment had an opportunity to do it.
I also feel like AMP has, uh. Gone over the top to respond to comments even after the public comment period officially closed and has. Tried to accommodate the residents and concerns of the residents adequately.
I would agree with that.
So, um, so if everybody's comfortable at this point indicating that the record is closed and that no additional written, written public comment will be accepted for the record. Then someone should make a motion to that.
I'll make a motion to officially close the public comment period for, for one and two projects moving forward. Yes.
Yes.
Gosh.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes.
Okay, so, so the next, the next thing that we wanted to, uh, start looking at, remember last time we had asked Prime A E. To assist us in reviewing the E A F part two and part three, and so they're here tonight to do that. And so I would just ask if they would, if, if Bill, but if you guys could give us an update on where you are with your review. Um, and then help us walk through parts two and three, that would be great.
Yes. So. I'm Jackie Smith, I'm with Prime A E group, um, I am a design engineer under Prime A E group. Uh, and I have assisted in the review of F E A F parts two and three and part one, I did review part one as well. But, uh, we're here to talk about parts two and three, um, and another thing that the board asked if you are interested in was. Special pertinence to the decommissioning, uh, assessment, if you would like to hear about that, I can provide information after I talk about parts two and three.
Um, Jackie, why don't you go over where you guys are in the review of the project and the decommissioning assessment? And then we'll do parts two and.
Okay, so, uh, we issued a letter today, believe us, yes, eighteen, uh, we issued a letter today stating our comments. You recall, if you've been calling this project, uh, after the amendment, um. Provided by AMP, we issued a very, very long comment letter addressing all of the things we've received. Um, this letter has gotten substantially shorter, uh, we. Have received, um, site plans, drawings that, uh, we were satisfied with, that met our comments. The one remaining issue we, or comment we had was regarding the SWIP and the F E A F, uh, the. Um, contributing land types of the stormwater management versus the parcel coverage. Uh, we asked AMP to provide drawings that kind of summarize what land cover. Uh, was contributing to the stormwater management and the parcel type, uh, they did that and we found that to correlate with what they had. Stated the land cover to be, so we found that to meet our request. Um. Which you'll see in the letter, uh, we did note that they had revised their E A F part one, uh, we, we noted that change in our letter. The planning board, so originally we had said that the decommissioning plan, um, kind of met the requirements of solar, local solar law. And, um, what we would like to see in a decommissioning plan, however, uh, the planning board did ask us to look a little deeper at that and we compared. Uh, AMP's decommissioning plan against. Local, other local facilities of similar size and height. And found that AMP's decommissioning assessment was some, uh, partially larger than what we were seeing at comparable facilities. So in that light, we found it to be on par of what we were seeing. We also compared it to, um, NYSERDA sample, uh, decommissioning, uh. Evaluation of what they like to see, um, or what is comparable in the area, uh, we compared. We cross-examined that with AMP's decommissioning plan and found, again, AMP's decommissioning plan to. Exceed what we compared it to in NYSERDA's evaluation, so we, our comment letter described that. Um. We, one of the things that we had continued to ask for was, uh, comment, uh, responses regarding, um, the access road, there was a. Many moons ago, there was a comment letter from a concerned citizen regarding, uh, the access road and we asked AMP to provide information regarding. Access road capabilities, uh, which we consulted the fire code on the state fair code and the, um. And quote enforcement officer Dale, uh, and there were a few remaining things, however. AMP had satisfied our comments regarding that, regarding, uh, the, the loading of the access road. So as they submitted a. Engineer. Based letter regarding the loading. Um. Our last thing that was a new item on this letter was, uh. A comment regarding the tracking system and assembly installation, uh, one of the items we had asked about was. The recommendations by the manufacturer regarding, uh, a flat surface to install the racking on. And AMP provided a response that said, manufacturer said it was in, within the tolerance of acceptable construction of the sloping. So that was our letter, um, we touched on the decommissioning, are you happy to answer anything more on those items if the board has them?
Yeah, the one question I added was about number twenty-one, we have a clarification that. So, so your, your analysis is complete based on. Non-verified infiltration rates.
Um, so yes, the comment is saying if the infiltration rates come back and they differ from what is. Their design counts, then it would need to be redesigned essentially, so essentially our recommendation to the board would be to not. Pass anything until those came back, um, which I don't believe they've been, they've been conducted yet, the percolation test.
Work has been contracted, is not yet conducted, we're trying to get someone out there ASAP.
Okay, Bill, can you keep us surprised if we're, and how long it will take to get that information?
I will note that I believe it's difficult to perform percolation tests when the ground freezes and we're approaching winter, so. I, hopefully that happens before that.
Um, and there was one other point too, I believe, on the decommissioning process, I just don't want to distract you there. Sure, um, I think initially there was some discussion about what was covered by Cowan in the agreement, like at the end of life, would they come and get the batteries? And I understand that that's not the case in the, in this situation, so I believe in the materials that, um, Bill gave us. He put in there the cost of removal and disposal of the battery. So were you guys, I'm assuming you saw that, Jackie?
I did not see that, I know in their decommissioning assessment, there was. The cost of it, when Cowan would reclaim them, that was like a thirty-six thousand dollar figure, I don't believe, was there a figure provided regarding disposal?
There was.
Oh, I must, we must have.
Yeah, so the thirty-six thousand is the cost of getting it off-site. Our new thing has a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar cost for recycling. And that was the estimate from Cowan of the cycling cost, so a hundred and fifty-nine thousand per project, so I'd be, if you double that for all projects.
Um, which item was that included in?
That was the, um, revised battery, um, or V E S decommissioning plan. And that number was also fed into the revised, presented revised breakdown of decommissioning costs, revised appendix two.
Can you give? Uh, cost of decommissioning plan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm holding this mission right now, seven hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents.
That for both together or what?
Sure, that's together. And in that document, we all, we have the breakdown for both bodies individually and the sum.
Maybe you could just email that piece of it to Jackie, so she can see it.
Yeah, that would be great, I don't, I do, I don't know if I've seen that.
I did get it, but it came like at the end of last year.
Okay. Okay.
What we'll do is, um, uh, you know, if I am what the board wants to do, we'll, we'll have to specify that the decommissioning plan that was approved by the town board. Be amended, so it'll have to be an amendment.
If there was no, there's no salvage.
Yeah, you can look at it, they backed that number out.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate that, yeah.
Sorry, um, just a clarification, valid values never actually back into decommissioning amount, that was always provided as a reference. We find the decommissioning here, then it's on the side we have salvage, but this number never actually loaded this number in that, but it was just on the side as a reference. Yeah, the change, the roughly three hundred thousand dollar increase is a function of adding recycling costs for both batteries. We originally thought this was part of the decommissioning, this is part of a contract with Cowan, it's a con, it's a contract provision that we have to execute. That's why we came back out of the recycling cost.
And I'm gonna stress again, the decommissioning bond is a protection for the town in the event. Yeah, or the then current owner of the facility doesn't decommission it, the town fully expects that it will be decommissioned and has. You know, the, the town, um, this doesn't obligate the town to decommission it, it's only there as a protective measure. And every five years, you're gonna look at the amount again and increase it if, if there's a change in the, in the change in the cost of the anticipated from decommission. And that could go both ways, you know, and if it's, uh, if it's, recycling of all these things becomes very common. You know, then it could reduce costs in the future, nobody knows, that's, that's the whole point, I mean, the expectation is everything just gets more expensive, but, you know. It could be optimistic. The cost of flat TV has gone substantially down the last few years. I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate it, I do appreciate that, um, would you like me, how would you like me to proceed, planning board? Okay, um, so part two and part three, we reviewed, I'll start off with part two, uh, we reviewed the original submission. Uh, we reviewed the original submission, the original drafted version, which was in August of 2021. And, uh, three things, we there were three things that we changed sort of after re, after reviewing it, uh, three items were revised. Um, this was not issued via email or letter. This was just, I brought it to the planning board tonight. Uh, we can issue it formally to the planning board. Um, but so number nine of the part two, which is impact on aesthetic resources. Previously, the, the basis box was checked no. Um, we re, re-reviewed that and I will say that part three is sort of an explanation as to why things have been checked yes or no. Um, and we actually created an in-depth explanation for every items one through 18 on that description. But number nine originally was checked no because the aesthetic this, the aesthetics of the site were more or less going to be mitigated due to current screening of the property and proposed screening of the property, as well as if you read the specifics of number nine and every item A through G, they are talking specifically more or less about official designated scenic views and resources and very few aesthetic officially designated resources are in the area and the perception of this. The one item that we found to be a small impact is the Route 7 interface as there are deciduous trees that are in that area. Um, and they, and also it is, it discusses um, item D discusses routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work. So at the right angle, you may be able to see this. It would be a very small impact. I don't want to say very small, this, not to no or small. Um, so there would be a small impact if you are if you happen to glance that way. I don't know exactly what angle we would be looking at, but uh, it's potential that you could see that on your way to and from work. So that was the item that we were more focused on. Um, that's why we changed the answer to number nine. And then if you perceive all items remain the same except for, uh, number 17. Um, consistency with community plans. Um, all items were checked, no or small impact, except for A, A has been revised as the site, the panel site is 60 acres. And so the proposed actions, land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. This is the only proposed solar facility in the, in the surrounding area. So of course, that will be a substantial differentiation, different differentiation from what is currently there. So we wanted to say that 60 acres isn't isn't small. So we wanted to say that there may be a moderate, a large impact there. And then number 18, consistency with community character. Um, item F was revised. Uh, proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. Like that is for the same explanation I sort of just used to describe the change in number 17. It's the only proposed item of similar content at the site and there's no natural, uh, solar panels out there right now. So that was the change. And then, um, part three. Yes, of course, of course.
Yeah. Yeah. One, two, we just make sure that you guys all agree with the two, two that we've down here. All right. So the first one, impact on lands, obviously having the impact on lands. Um. There may be a small impact where that's what people want to be thinking. So just want to make sure that you all are comfortable with these being checked as no or small impact made for. Okay. The next one. There are no, no geological features there. Um, so we're gonna skip to impacts on surface water and this is all, this is all about stormwater basically. And I know that Jackie's looked at the stormwater pollution prevention plan where, or primary has that you've taken a deep dive into it. Um, do you feel that any of the impacts on surface water from from stormwater will, will be significant?
I do not think, as long as the infiltration tests are verified. Under that assumption.
So we're gonna put an asterisk here and we're just saying, any of the infiltration results. At the bottom. You know, a lot of the things here like will include construction of outfalls or impacts that's not occurring here. And we had, and I, and you all had very strong views on this. Um, the J is the proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body. So there is no water body on the site. There's no pond. There's no streams. Um, there are smaller areas of federal wetlands. And I think the condition that you wanted to place on this relative to the use of herbicides was that of course couldn't be registered and the person applying maybe would be licensed to do so. But for invasive species or things like poison ivy, you didn't want to just let that grow on the site unchecked. If that, was that the pause?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not. I mean, I think the, the pesticide applicator act confirmed it regardless of our condition.
Well, I'm just pointing at you so people know that. I agree with you. It's not a local, you know, table. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the guards, um, you know, if there was a basis species or not just we, you know, without that then spreads neighboring properties on that impact of it.
And of course, that's not a pesticide.
Oh, it could be both.
You have enough outside?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We got some speedos.
Yeah.
There, there actually, you need to control them much sooner than we, we can get a plan of it. So.
Oh, you mean like a land and bug or?
Yes, fireland by, you know, herder hornets are out west and you want to get on those and typically it's a pesticide. Yeah, hold that for my four building. There's a lot of them.
Okay, so we'll pay a lot of attention to any conditions. The next one is impact on groundwater. So, um, there have been concerns about impact on, uh, toxic leaching out of panels running into stormwater and then going into groundwater. Um. We had the gentleman from Nicerta come and talk about that. Um, we also asked AMP to provide test results from the manufacturer of the panels that they're going to be installing on the site. And those test results show non-detect or the type of chemicals that we concerned was raised. Um, and you all have seen that and you, Jeff, you worked for D C for like, what, 40 years? How many?
Thirty seven.
Thirty seven. Wow. Okay. Now, I, I've looked at it. I'm an attorney. I mean, have, have you guys taken a look at those uh, results as yet or could you do that before the next meeting? Could you do that before the next meeting? All right. So we'll have a timetable to get it to, but they're all non-detect results. They're all the, there are many, many chemicals that apparently in Europe they're required to test for, that they don't test for in the United States. So Bill, is there, this would be a good point for you to add something if there's anything we would like to add?
I think the test results speak for themselves. They were all done according to European reach regime, which is a lot larger stricter than the American testing protocols.
And we could list them all, but I would mangle that. So, um, those are in the Dropbox for anybody who wants to look at them?
They have not uploaded yet, but they will be.
They will be? Okay.
Yeah, sorry. There, there's a few documents from this week that I haven't uploaded yet, but I'll do that all tomorrow.
You'll do it tomorrow? Okay, great. That'd be good. That saves Melissa having to, you know, send them around. But we appreciate that. May I, may I ask a question of AMP?
Uh, you have my personal email address. Could you Dropbox that to my personal email address?
Check, check, send you the, the link of public folders, or should you, the pub, all the public documents to you or the test results?
The link to the Dropbox. Thank you.
I think it's on the town website.
Oh.
It's on the town website.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Can you send you all the information?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, anything else here on the groundwater? They're not building wells. They're not using any groundwater. Um, impact of flooding, we are not in a, you know, flood plain floodway or part of anything. There have been allegations by neighbors that there are concerns with the stormwater and the floods uh, enthralling fields. Um, that.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is compliant based on the infiltration test, New York State D C requirements are pre-versed post at the time points going off the property. So again, uh, the applicant has shown calculations that stormwater runoff will be uh, less than or equal to the existing conditions. So there will be no impact as far as I can see to neighboring properties. Based on the New York State requirements, not other states.
Um, recording? Uh, there, there are no air mission associated with that. So. There was a discussion of the, um, the fire safety uh, surrounding the batteries. Does anybody have any concern given the information that we have from um, from, uh, battery experts here? I get it wrong. E R S D?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry. So, any, any concern about air missions associated with that?
That was going to stand up, but explanation, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe they didn't identify that there really is no effect. On the ball, please.
All right. And, um, and I, I do believe that ER.
One thing we also just wanted to say is we did discuss with E S R G having them review all the evidence for the fire department. We don't think any specialized evidence needed, but we're going to pay for E S R G to look at their equipment, do an inventory and see if there's anything else that should be added.
E S R G, the fire report wants to get that information or is it going to be like a, a one-off letter? Um, amended to this report?
My expectation, you know, one-off letter, but this is, we're frankly still in the play in the early stages of this. There's, there's a community comment about this and we said, we actually thought it was a reasonable request. So very early stages, we did mention this to the fire chief and E S R G.
And there, and, um, not the town paying for E S R G to be able to work to, at least in this pain for um, you want to make sure that the firefighters have exactly what they need, including the training, which would also be fully covered. So. Next one, impact on plants and animals. Uh, so these are, are essentially hayfields. Um. This is not, any type of habitat that's rare or uncommon in the town. It's going to be acres and acres of it everywhere. Um, so does anybody have any concerns here about any habitat? I think, didn't we get the typical one-year gap hit on this one? So.
The tree cutting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So any tree cutting would have to be before April 1st, right? Before April 1st. Um, and there's after November 1st.
Well, then if it's outside that window, they can talk to D C, have a biologist. We're not helping us.
Um, the trees have to be at least, I think, three inches at breast height?
There's different species, but it's a bigger bark. Yeah. And then, you know, 10 and above is a different, you know, class, you know, breed of tree species that check your bark. There's waves around.
Yeah.
There's.
So we should address that as a condition. Um, and then we already talked about I, which is the proposed action involves impacts on agricultural resources. So. This is, this is undoubtedly the biggest, uh, biggest problem that people have with solar, rural areas not impact on agricultural resources. And in this case, um, we really do not have the applicant's property, again, hayfields, no crops in living memory.
Same, really, this one is probably really agricultural. I mean, it's work, rush field, agricultural.
If it ever was, it hasn't been for a long, long time.
But even then, a lot of the, most of this is irreversible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think that's a misconception. It, it, it covers the site now with those posts. Um, when they're removed and decommissioned, the soil hasn't been removed. Uh, it's not like there's a warehouse or a laptop so it can truck off.
Oh.
I mean, it is no or small. I mean, the main topic is, yes.
I mean, media.
Yes. Sometimes it's hard to go back to the questions that are actually in writing some comments.
Yes.
Crosswalk is important.
All right. And then I think that area we talked about the impact on resources. I think it's important to note that we have nine and 10 here and we're going to go together. Um, that AMP has gotten very clear letters from the state's word preservation office that that the proposal will not have an impact on archaeological resources. that the proposal will not have an impact on archaeological resources or historic resources. And, um, you know, again, as Matt says, it's temporary in terms of the impact of new shared impact. And, um, certainly, uh, the State's Fair Preservation Office is the office with the most expertise in this particular area. Is everybody comfortable with the impact on aesthetic resources and the impact on historic and archaeological resources? Uh, the next one is open space and recreation. This, this is an odd one because this is private land, so it's not available for, uh, hasn't been available for recreation except for, uh, on this.
Well, you weren't, we're hungry, we're hungry this afternoon.
But I wouldn't, I mean, yeah.
Elaborate on our choice.
Of course.
Um, uh, again, what, um,
Walco.
So Walco just said is that in the, in the F D A F Part One, the applicant does indicate that it has been used for private projects in the past. That was one of our items, uh, that we considered. And then additionally, uh, item B says potential for future recreational resource. I mean theoretically, almost anything could be a potential future, uh, recreational resource. But that is kind of where we came from in our answer of, you know, just small.
Yeah. Okay, we don't have a critical environmental areas. That's a term apart. Um, transportation on a state highway, so. Impacts on energy, uh, really, the only thing it does here is arguably a good thing. That's why we're trying to increase renewables. Everybody has a different view on that, but that's a taste view anyhow. Um, impact on noise, odor, and light. So, um, certainly no odor. Um, there'll be noise during construction, that's relatively narrow in the whole time. Uh, there's not gonna be blasting. Um. There's, there's no lighting, right Bill? Yeah, okay, so there's, there's no lighting. And we also have noise. Yeah. That's, that's what I'm hearing. There was a, so there was originally a noise study done at the beginning, and then that noise study was completely replaced with a new noise study because of the new equipment. Okay, and then impact on human health. Uh, and, you know, we checked that, no, it's not within fifteen hundred feet of a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, home, nursing home, or retirement community. The site is not undergoing remediation. Um, uh, the, it's not subject to an institutional control. Um, and it's not a solid waste management facility. It's not gonna unearth solid or hazardous waste. Um, it's, it doesn't involve any increase in the rate of disposal or processing of solid waste. Um. Yeah, these are all very specific things that, you know, just putting on the flight of the situation. And these are the most typical ones. So this is, this to do with community plan. So it's consistent with the zoning, if, if they meet all the requirements of the stolen law. Um, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan doesn't say anything negative about solar. Um, and that was just recently updated. It does say that the town is looking at solar, which the town is looking at amending the solar law, and they'll continue to amend it until everybody's satisfied with it. Um. And, uh, so, and the county has gone into solar in a big way, and they have their own solar plant. They even looked for sites in Wayne'sburg, there weren't any. They tried to get them to use the landfill, it wasn't close enough to the connection point. Um, they looked at a number of sites. And, uh, they, they just couldn't find any that worked. They mostly ended up in Lendo and Rotterdam, I believe. You know, but they did that in cooperation with G E. Um, the, not because change in the density of the water, it doesn't require any infrastructure, doesn't require any, um, the only community service that's really common to question is just fire, which, which you're looking at. So are you guys okay with seventeen?
Yep.
Okay, and then eighteen, consistency with community character. So we're a very rural area. We have one solar facility on Alexander Road. Um, but we don't have a lot of solar facilities. So really, this is just, this is just a, a factor that it's not typical out here. If you think about it, you know, at one point, telephone poles and electrical wires weren't typical either, and now they are. So, um, it's just a question of, you know, changing methods for getting energy. But it is unquestionable that some people, uh, do not find them attractive, and that it is inconsistent with the character needs to natural landscape.
Great idea.
Yeah. Any, any other ones here that you guys want to check? Okay, and you want to walk us to the, to the Part Three?
I would love to do that. Um, so originally, um, the first page of Part Three was built, and we decided to attach in a supplementary document, which is in word, in coherence with the reason supporting this determination item, if that additional sheet is needed. So, uh, we did do that, and we put forward, you can see, um, a description of all items, one through eighteen, have been addressed of why, uh, the decision was made to go one, you check yes or no, um, on those. So I could read it if you'd like me to, you don't have to read it.
I was just expecting to take a look.
Sure.
So does anybody want to add anything regarding the change in the total acreage to be physically disturbed? We spent a lot of time looking at that. Yeah. It's air rap, one, two, three, four. Originally, E D P, and this is my understanding. Originally, E D P designed it, and they basically said, if we're not grading it or filling it, then it's not being physically disturbed. And the difference here with the AMP's, uh, E D P was they felt that just driving construction equipment over the site caused compaction, which they considered to be disturbance. Do I have that right, Jeff?
Yeah, I think so. You know, disturbance is a kind of an undefined term as far as, if you look at the, the stormwater regulations, disturbance means one thing.
Yeah.
This is not the same disturbance.
I believe in the, in the secret format, disturbance is considered, even if you're cutting down a tree, that is considered disturbing the land, whereas that wouldn't be disturbance from a stormwater regulation. So I, I would agree that the sixty-nine point seven-two acres, as far as secret is concerned, is the correct uh, valuation for disturbance. And I would also agree that the, you know, increase in impervious has also, which went later for the SWIP was accurate as well.
So you're comfortable with the numbers that we have in here?
I.
And as far as the, the, uh, access roads, where they actually are cutting and grading, are we all, are you all comfortable with the design and the access roads? Yeah. We do have a letter from the fire guys saying they're comfortable. We have a letter from Dale as the, as the building secretary, he's the fire official for Wayne'sburg. He is also fine with that. Um.
And the roads are compliant with New York State P D C's design of impervious temper, or impervious, uh, low-volume access roads. So they were designed, uh, in accordance with the State's.
So there are federal weapons on the site, and the disturbance is very small. Um, and it's been reduced, yeah, from fifty, fifty. I passed the numbers. Less than one hundred.
Um, I can comment a little, just really briefly on that. Is the United States Army Corps of Engineers, who moderate the, and evaluate the federal weapons, they're in charge of doing that. They, AMP did receive a letter from the United States Army Corps of Engineers saying, this is in compliance with our general permit, and even the change has been approved.
And, um, aesthetic resources. And the shippo, Chinos. And the Hunter. So any, anything, anybody have any problems with the piece we died in? Now, and this is gonna be pending the infiltration. Um, and I, I think that's the only thing. Yeah, related to this.
Anything you might want to do if you found an elsewhere's preference, Army Corps letter in this?
Okay.
Received, I would just be helpful with that. I think the shippo, whatever it represents.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good idea, I'm gonna follow there. And, and I'm not suggesting that we make a decision on this tonight, because we don't have any infiltration. It's all, I'm rather doing all of one than, uh, doing P C L. Um, so infiltration, and I think we are looking for some more information from E R S P on the fire equipment. There, are they undertaking that review now with the fire guys?
No, they have nothing to do with yet. This is something we just talked about, you're right, we, last year, this is.
So this would be condition?
Right.
Okay. And not a condition to secret, but a condition to the site, specialty. Anything else, guys?
I think there was some other, uh, recommendations from the S R G that might go into the condition, special. So I believe we can give those.
Yeah.
One, one of them have to do about training, you know, now they're gonna do it. Training, the fire department is talking about maybe yearly training or something like that. Um, the, the, having the documents and manuals available through the tax box, or something like that. Uh, so, so there were some other, uh, items talked about.
Yeah, and I, I think it would, I think it would be really helpful, um, that i- if, if any of the planning board members could bring, you know, marked, marked up saying what the conditions are, that you would like to be. That way we can be sure we don't miss any when we, when we go through this at the December meeting. I certainly don't want to miss anything, I want to make sure we've got everything, um, put together. Addition to E S R G, any, where, just, we're thinking about.
Uh, that. Howin or AMP provides the U L ninety-four fifty more system free. You know, that's a, a long process, and it may not be for a year, year and a half. But when it is done, I think by condition that, that that is provided. And that was also a recommendation, yes, right?
Yeah, you're right.
And we have the, the data. Um, were there hours of operation in terms of construction or anything? I mean.
Not, not existed in the.
Part one of?
Yeah, part one, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna want to, let's, let's enjoy that.
Yeah, because there's construction days, and then also operational days, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the operational phases were fine, as you have instructions. Uh, there was, there was some suggestion about, um, having a source of water on site. I think the fire, fire guys actually had a little different view on that. They didn't see that that was beneficial, so, you know, just think about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think E S R G said, talk to your local guys, they're gonna know what your capabilities are, what, you know, they, they didn't want to really talk about it, because they didn't know what the capability of the local people were, and what was useful to them or not. And, you know, I believe it was that they were not looking for that.
That is my response. Well, they may already have a water supply nearby, they're a little bit filled up.
Oh, and that's where we, when we have the discussion about what equipment may be needed, maybe there's, if, if there was something that was deficient on their ability to pump that water or freeze it. That's kind of how we saw many of them, they have, those are the way they bring it to their person.
If you think of any other conditions, you know, we, we have, there's already the screening agreement, which the town has, uh, approved, that's in place. Uh, is there any desire to increase the screening, or the number of trees, or anything on the site?
Compensate for the increased point. I think they, they have it. So they added additional screening on the one location, correct?
Yeah, we added additional screening, we did not increase the height from the, the agreement assignments July.
But the length, the length was, you know, different.
I mean, at this point, we have the, um, I know, I'm not one hundred percent sure the change has happened, but I can say that sheets that C seven clearly, it shows in the I C sets, it shows our most recent vegetation plan. I'm pretty sure finally he has looked at.
The height was changed, right? With the nicer, the.
It went from sixteen to eighty.
And I believe that was, that was. And I believe that was, that was during the amendment period, correct? Not recently?
Correct. It was at the beginning. That was, yeah.
So we'll take, take a look at the landscape and things and think there's any things that might be addressed to those. I mean, the big changes in the project were the height of panels, the battery storage configuration. The access roads, that's right. So, I mean, I haven't. I think the access road is non-controversial, so I would spend your time with the other. Okay. So you ready to table this until December?
Can I just ask one, one clarification? Just, just, I just want to be clear. Um, so for secret, the board needs to have the per test on before their negative formation significance.
Yeah, we do need that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that.
And you need to do it now, Eddie, however you need to do it.
Right, it's down in the breeze.
I'll make a motion to table. Matter of OKR one to Silver Project until our December.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Starting new business, Bill and Dennis. Thank you for, for.
Oh, wait, last meeting I didn't call me, we're waiting for more information.
Just give us a rundown of where you are.
Um, we're trying to get to the public hearing part of the process, but I've got a paper from Park Recreation. And I think it's already, and I just a couple of days ago got one from DOT paperwork. I know that's more paperwork to get submitted. Just one thing I did want to ask is about the driveway. And the turnaround. I understand the turnaround for fire trucks at the end, but not an access road really, it's the driveway. So I mean, and it's based on the charts I'm hearing, driveway or access road zero to hundred fifty feet is gotta be twenty feet wide. Nobody's driveway is twenty feet wide. I'm gonna take it so. Yeah. Well, I understand, I do understand that, but a lot of people driveway that hundred people are just. Most of my life's been, yeah, so.
There's a, there's a fire code heading here and that's what requires the, prior to building code, there's nothing you can do about it.
For driveways or access?
For driveways or access roads? Is there a differentiation or no? I'm just asking.
There is not a differentiation.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, sounds fine. Yeah, I think that's it. For, for certain lengths, it's different. All right, so that's something you need to get a survey of, a discussion, the drawing and Q is, is that information? Also, and obviously we're a little longer than, based on the chart. Over, over seven hundred fifty feet is a fifty foot wide strip of property that gives expert flag for the back piece of property is over seven hundred fifty feet long by twenty-five feet or so, so. Obviously, I'll have to probably talk, fire department, just their approval on, however I draw, so let's work for that. Talk to Dale and then, okay. All right. I know there's some other agencies, guys, where you're requesting information from also.
They did want to know a place on the land. Getting a lot to be, mustn't buy the spider boat. The line one.
Yes, which is the driveway.
Yeah. So, and I, I'll get him, he's a little bit here. It's, it's, it's the type of class, it's a light one. Yeah, okay.
Because it's adjacent to the, um, so.
Okay, what did it say?
Remove some of the, the archaeological, the archaeological resources.
We just really know and have to send it on ahead and take those determinations and send the public hearing factors. DOT, the colleges, town for the agency, highly work content, DEX for the work content leadership, for the progress of competition. And DOT also request the town take ownership of any public utilities and DOT, right, why? Do you pose any?
No. Uh, I think the only, only thing that was called replied. So I don't know if there's any ditches out there. That's what it was referring to us.
The town?
Which I would, I would, they try to push everything. Oh, they're doing everything sidewalks now, every, I mean, they're like.
I don't remember.
Really, yes.
But I couldn't remember what. Yeah, I guess the homework. No, and it's funny because the plan we had, that's what you know, authority to take this time, really, they're not bad. Yeah.
Now, one question I'd like to update on, based on, uh, Q, just off, yes, kind of give us an explanation. Private setting joining an area currently used for hunting, trapping, fishing, shot fishing. If yes, give a brief description.
That's on the long term? Yeah. I think your ask is on the one.
It is on the one.
It is on the one. I just thought, I didn't find me a.
Yeah, yeah. You're just asking where do we grab?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the long term.
Nine state of nine nine one and. On mine. And this is.
We have nine seven.
You have nine nine one, I think Dale did, and it was pre-populated with PBC temper. So the answer automatically answered, no question, well. You're relieved.
At one point. Do we need to get agricultural statement on this?
Uh, if we're within, if we're in an ag district and we're within five hundred feet of a, of an agricultural.
I have, I'm surveying this. There's nine states of, yeah. There's a.
There should have been an extension that went to the counties. Did we set along to the county? We did, the local neighbors. Okay. So, it's all been on now. Yeah, one of these.
Are you worried that farm operations may vary thus far as the vibration of the conditions? Declaration?
Dale, Dale prepared it.
Dale prepared, okay, okay.
The trans was very small, so.
We'll read the direction. The one thing is that's right.
Pose. For the two counties. Uh, the Seaton A Major subdivision project, even evaluated from environmental impact towards its keeper, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. In the education of parts one, two, and three, the total environmental assessment form. On part two, identification of potential project impacts, none of the potential project impacts have been identified as moderate to large. Subdivision located on tax map number five point zero zero dash one dash four one, which is an approximately fifteen acre parcel to be divided into three lots. Lot two A consists of approximately five point two five acres. Lot two B consists of approximately five point five nine, five point nine five acres. And lot two C consists of approximately four point five acres. The proposed major subdivision is consistent with the town comprehensive plan, the town zone and the town zoning ordinance. The parcel is not located in an environmental sensitive area or a hazardous waste communication site and it's not within the three year flood. The anticipation of three single family wells to be constructed over a period of time. It is anticipated, excuse me, three single family wells will be constructed over a period of time. And project will require private wells to be drilled and private septic systems installed, requiring permits from the state county department. The total area of disturbance is anticipated to be less than one acre. Any construction will require appropriate temporary stormwater controls prior to any construction activities, prevent soil erosion. The action will not result in any impacts to agricultural resources if the property is not actively farmed with brooks. Any construction would take place outside of any bank areas as there may be federally regulated limits on the property. The proposed action will have no impact or any adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from mass transit, piping or walk. The proposed action should not create a hazardous environmental resources or human health or rare, threatened or dangerous spaces. There are no known archaeological sites on the property. Project is consistent with community character, with no and has no aesthetic impacts anticipated. The proposed action will have little to no impact or increase in the use of energy. The parcel is located on the national or state regular workplaces as it was once part of the Little Thomas Farm complex. And if the state historic preservation office has determined that there will be no concerns with the sub, with the subdivision relative to historic or cultural resources. Therefore, based on this information, the proposed major subdivision will not have any second adverse impacts on the environment. Negative declarations that purchases a particle eight environmental conservation law. And I'd also like to say, say that we plus part of this project is super tight on action. So I'm looking at that portion for a limited area to manage. System, system that needs your subdivision. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
What?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
I make a motion, is that called, Jerry? I make a motion, uh, of the assistant subdivision for the December sixteenth.
I'll second.
Process.
Yes.
Man.
Yep. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill. Keep those fires straightened out.
Yeah, you can leave it, Bill.
Yeah, yeah, keep that straightened out and we'll see you in the sixteenth.
Very thanks.
Okay, good. This is our new business, Richard Kirkker. Sixty-nine, sixty.
And it's time for ABD engineers representing Richard Kirkker, the applicant. Uh, we were here last month, September two. And so the subdivision application, it's a two lot subdivision on Gage Road, uh, sixteen plus acre lot, also divided into two lots. Lot one is to the north, two point seven acres. Lot two to the south is five point six point acres. Uh, we're just here tonight to request that we sit a public hearing. We have slowed up a little with the variance because the meeting was canceled the other night, but we expect our variance before the next planning board meeting. Yeah, for the access road and property. Yeah, so the, the variance is for lot one. We only have forty-three point four, six feet of drainage. And it's that north real lot.
Shared drive or shared road in the access agreement.
Yeah, it's gonna be on here. We got the access agreement and when we come into the book here, I'll show it on the plan for you. We didn't submit after. You want to see the actual driveway on the plan? Yeah, and then you're probably gonna need the, the ground, the subging, yeah.
But sure, drive is what on the sixty-four, or the slide on the forty-fourth, or a lot?
Yeah, it's under sixty-four lot, yeah. And we'll meet the, yeah, meet the fire for standards of the turnaround and previous driveway. There aren't septic flushes, I believe, was in it. I mean, I, that could have been, I'll talk to Joe, I thought that was.
I haven't, I haven't seen.
Well, I thought Joe submitted a little bit.
Did he come through the variance?
He must have.
So it must be his zoning board.
Okay.
Yeah, and he, so I probably have it in the other maps.
I'll make sure you get that.
Yeah, I don't have it. Would be comfortable that we have enough information to get it. And then we can take this completely separate without reference area, so. Well, you have to wonder your town law is, yes, before the division is. And then once it's completed, scheduled public hearing. So I don't know, is there any information we're missing?
I, I, I see, I mean. Yeah, yeah, I, I would, I would say that, I mean, it appears that it's doable, but I mean, we don't have any plans showing it. And I think if you have that before, say that the drive is reasonable. That's my.
It's a sixty foot, I mean, we could certainly set a twenty foot driveway down there with each turnaround at each driveway, so. We need to also say here, if you'd like to turn around, you guys can turn around.
I think last night when we asked for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll set it next one. I. And the next table.
Yeah, we'll take it.
Make the motion. Make the motion.
The juror here.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Just say quite a long, always.
Yes.
Yeah. Or the shop for test.
Right, you guys try to set up for next year. The holiday Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, next, the underhand business, Land Armstrong, Christian Rhodes Minor Subdivision. Thanks for waiting.
No problem. Good evening, everyone, my name is John Romano, I'm here representing the Armstrong project on behalf of Jacob Lagardis from Northeast Plains, right? He is unable to be present tonight and he's actually got a public. Uh, so he sends his regards.
Jacked it right away.
Exactly. Uh, so, I was briefed on the project briefly last week, uh, that this age one minor subdivision, uh, is thirty nine acres, was splitting it off into a twelve acre lot and a twenty seven acre lot. This is a state sale, but looking to sell the farmhouse and retain the rest. As far as I'm aware, a short PAF was submitted, did submit the act data statement this week. Um, so I know it hasn't gone to anybody yet, you know, let me know if you guys had a chance to take a look at it, if there's any questions with that. Uh, there is a stormwater management report that was swift that was, uh, developed for it, and it is on file with that. There's notes on the plans that reference the act data statement as well as the potential need for an NOI in the future depending on how much disturbance is done. Obviously, with a, a minor action like this, you know, somebody might come in the future and try to subdivide that lot further, which would obviously necessitate another review. Uh, with that, right now, as far as I'm aware, they're not planning to do anything with it, no single houses or anything like that, we just wanted to try to. Here, answer any questions that I might be able to, not looking for any actions tonight, just hoping to present the project. Uh, ask any questions you that you may have, so I can bring it back to Jacob Lagardis. Okay, so there's questions with the deed, I don't have any answers.
It looks like he's addressed them.
You don't?
No, no, the reservoir.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, what's the moment?
Yeah.
But if that, that's just drawn differently on there, is there any restrictions instead of X waters, or is it high water?
I don't know that, unfortunately, uh, I will certainly relay that information and pay back to you guys about that.
And maybe you can have Dave first.
Absolutely, I would be happy to, probably write a cover letter or whatever.
Yeah. It will be.
Those are primarily.
I think we could once we're certain, we understand what's going on with that reservoir. Um, and the other, the other problem with this, I thought that this was like born in a series of subdivisions I had never done relatively recently.
Isn't it? It's two parcels now and it's, you're just changing the line, right?
Well, there's a D division line, is, um, what I was told, I didn't necessarily know there was, it's only as a, as a subdivision, not necessarily as a lot line adjustment. Um, with that, because, you know, the D division line kinda goes, goes right through progress, so there would be new frontage created as part of this.
What's it?
Oh, so, we're, we have, in some instances, we're just shifting the line.
Yeah.
I think what he's saying here is just we're creating a new lot. And sometimes we create a new lot and we still refer it to Dale. We were very nervous about doing that with this one because the reservoirs are nothing.
Well, what, what is it, D division line, show them that, what is, what is that?
Oh, it's like, they used to do that to subdivide stuff, but it wasn't, it's not legal now.
It's still one property.
It's still one property, it's probably still one tax map parcel.
Parcel more, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's like the whole where.
Oh, yeah. And there's no problem with under a parcel.
And so then, things were subdivided, they did it by D. So, they would go out, they would survey the line, they put the line, and there might not even be a map, it would just be awful meat and bones. We hold our own tree, five chains.
Yeah.
And that's, that's kind of going with my.
So, sorry, we don't have to worry about it for this perspective, we still talk about two parcels for us.
This is a two lot subdivision with land and the reservoir. We wanna make sure it's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you, you look, the other question that I think you brought is, how many other subdivisions happen?
Yeah, I guess the sense with the sentence subdivided before.
There is a reference to an older subdivision plans of Elizabeth Pribs, uh, subdivision flat town of Queensburg. So, there is, um, there is a filing that, that it references. And I don't think when. It doesn't buy it.
Well, that's, you know, it, you just, it's, remember, it's principles of zoning or planning or whatever. That, you know, the fact that comes, that's a long time ago, so, yeah. But let, let's get, let's get the deed information, I really wanna make sure that's right. And then you can refer it to Dale at that point if you want to. Okay.
Okay, so we need the deed information, any other questions or concerns that anybody asked?
Whether it's a call to confirm that you're.
Yeah, so just speaking of the, you know, who owns that part of the, of the border.
Yeah, I, I think Dale sent Dave all the standard notes that have to be on the plan. So, I think, I'm sure Dave's added the.
Yeah, there's notes under where it was almost serving good. They're, they're, they're pretty covered, it's, it's pretty well when they're. Um, any other applications we need to provide, obviously, we provided the act data statement, which I hope that will go into the county for, right? Uh, the week, yeah. So, yes. All right. Thank you very much. Yes. That comes on your question.
Yeah, I did.
Great.
Armstrong subdivision.
Thank you for waiting so long.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I'll, I'll.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, the names, no names.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, this is thirty. Artist man.
Hazen.
Hazen.
Yeah.
I work sending my, this would. Time time for it, so. This could be funny. However, I'm requesting the, um, one or two, which, well, we had probably spoken on this number meeting in September, multiple survey. We didn't provide it to people, it's, um, it's an experiment. Um, I remember Mr. O'Loch and his wife, Elizabeth, uh, are interested in, interesting two point eight, plus or minus acres. Uh, the southern, uh, private of our lands in order to have, I guess, a cushion around his own house. Uh, so when I visited him, I noticed that the bushes were kind of like, I was looking right at them, I was looking into backyard. And he said, well, I would really like to have this space, and I said, oh, that would be great, and that's when we decided to subtercut. So, um, it's pretty soft and supportive, uh, if you have any questions, I know that we have to do the only form for the environmental. Um, and anything I think I gave too much of it was, you are getting one year back, which you already mentioned today about not cutting down trees in November to April, so I think that's all. Right? I don't. Until we talk, you can, so, uh, I was not always heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, honestly, I don't really know where that would be, not mentioned anywhere on our territory, maybe it's the next two of us somewhere.
And even if it's a base on that one, it doesn't have to be right on the property, so that's what triggers kind of official views, I think.
I really don't know what to do about that. Dave, you can instruct me.
And before we do that, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So, they're not gonna keep their lot as a lot, they're gonna, they're gonna essentially move the boundary line. Do they have the whole thing, or are they gonna keep that as a separate lot?
I don't know yet, because when I last spoke to them, they said they weren't sure, they're still thinking about it. And they don't, they've heard other neighbors telling them what they should do, and so there's still. Question.
We, we can subdivide it in that if they wanna do a lot, refine revision, they can come back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I just wanted to check.
I would, it would be easier if I, I don't know.
Doesn't matter. No, it doesn't really, because both.
Well, when it's better from the shipload inspection, the lot line adjustment, we not need to do that again, or?
Well, that's a big player, I mean.
That's, I mean, from a, it's expected to be the one, but if they absorb that piece.
Hard to see how that would be a shipload problem.
Or don't you have, or the, the historic, um, cause it's near it, don't we have to get the, that to sign off on it?
Yes, yeah.
But if it's a lot line adjustment, you suck it.
No, it's a time two action, no, it's a time two action, no.
That would not create a lot.
That's right, so you could just refer it.
Turn it down. But unless she does that answer, it's still gonna be the next, I mean.
Be the next person.
They were undecided, I didn't wanna, you know, force the issue, because I felt, you know, it's their private business.
And this, and this project isn't proposing any disturbance to the trees, so they're pulling on your, I think this won't matter, they're not proposing, build something that is bound trees.
Yeah, that might be down the line, but at this point.
Yeah.
It's down the line.
But I think we just, yeah, we just need to send the order to ship on. Does Dale do that, or does he?
Okay, so, yeah, there's not a deal. And the next time you come, if you tell us that they wanna keep it all as one lot, then we're just gonna automatically give it to Dale to approve. But if you, if they're so unsure, then we'll, then we'll probably do a negative and we'll set the public hearing at the next meeting. So, you'd be having a public hearing in January.
Not in.
December, no, because we, we can't issue a negative until we're, you know, until we get the sign off. Negative, no, I'm sorry, negative declaration of environmental significant.
That's a simple story.
That's, but if you wanna keep it free on them, a little longer process.
The difference between being done in December and being done in January.
One month to fill whatever they want.
Because we, you don't wanna push it one way or the other.
Yes.
Whatever you want, you know.
All right. I will ask.
Okay, thank you.
Let's be sure.
We appreciate.
Yeah, very much.
Okay.
Thank you, safe to you.
They sketch the language, we have nothing, and it's approval, October twenty first. Please.
So, do I need to do something? Yes, you should come and listen.
Yeah. Dale can send it. You come up on your list, you know, the twenty first. Who listens, what's in our heart, all these letters, we need to stay in. A lot of work. A lot of work.
Great if we can switch to feel like, um, everybody can bring their. I, I'm spending the last enthusiasm. Think, think about it, think about it, they would say, Melissa, a lot of words.
Oh, that's.
I, I see that looking bored on her face.
Oh, he's bored.
Okay, I'm gonna make motion to approve the October twenty first language.
Yeah.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Could we table a payment? We can't table payment.
These are not, we did not table.
Yeah, I had.
And make a motion to.
Hold on, no, no. No, it's good. Yes. Wonderful.
Yes.
Are you waiting for?
I can, I can table the synergy. Hasn't. Minor subdivision until the December sixteen.
Yeah.
Best.
Yes. Matt.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mike Gavin seven, please, your next motion.
Listen, I'm, I'm, we're gonna help, I'm, I'm, okay, you're on, you're on the. Good turn, and nine forty five.
Thank you for, care.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Matt. Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Our eight bucks an hour.